So, good evening, and I want to thank you all for coming to the meeting tonight. I appreciate seeing you all here. And we want to start our meeting. We had a meeting beforehand, which we have nothing to report back on. We had a meeting at 5:15 in the conference room. And often, we have to talk about real properties, and we have to talk about evaluations of employees, which we both did, but we have nothing to report out on that. So with that, I would like to open the meeting, and I'll start with the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Paths and actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land, and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. And the city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. And this acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. So, thank you. With that, I would like to ask those that wish to stand for the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, roll call, please.
Mayor Stillman?
Present.
Vice Mayor White?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. And with that, this evening, under ceremonial matters, I'm going to read a certificate of appreciation for Brian Kang, who has been our GIS person for 26 years in the city of Arcata. And whereas the city of Arcata hired Brian Kang as part-time GIS or geographic information system technician in 1979, and Brian was promoted to full-time GIS specialist in 1999, and continued to advance in his role when his position was reclassified as GIS coordinator starting in 2013, whereas early Brian's career, he seamlessly provided Environmental Services Department with the assistance on IT, related matters, software management, bringing the department up to date with utilizing the city network upon its establishment. And whereas Brian's extensive knowledge of the city's infrastructure, whether digital or on the ground, positive relations with community members and staff, thoughtful approach to problem-solving has ensured through the recordation of the city's essential infrastructures and properties. And whereas under Brian's tenure, he has made a significant impact on numerous environmental service projects, most notably including McDaniel Slough Project, and the expansion of the Arcata Community Forest, and many other new features. Whereas Brian has been integral in supporting every department in the city with mapping, geospatial analysis, whether it was going into the field to stake out areas of restoration or conduct an area calculations for projects, while also ensuring our data is accessible to fellow city staff and the public and contractors on city-led projects. And whereas Brian's unwavering support of every department became a master of receiving multiple requests at a time, and yet still fulfilling all of them on time without breaking a sweat, that's quite great. And whereas through his dedication and adaptability to staying on the leading edge of geographic information systems, GIS technology, Brian has advanced the data tools available to both the city staff and the public for informed decision-making in the present and to future. And whereas Brian has long served the best interests of the city, its residents, visitors, and infrastructure, with dedication, resourcefulness, positivity, and a great sense of humor, Brian will be deeply missed, and the results of his service will ensure high quality of life in Arcata for many generations to come. Now, fair to the city council of the city of Arcata, hereby expresses appreciation to Brian Kang for serving the people of Arcata for 26 years. We wish him in retirement a wonderful, full life of pleasure, and he's a great surfer. So, with that, Brian.
(APPLAUSE).
Do you want to say any words about how you feel about this?
It's been wonderful.
You better come to the microphone.
Oh, yeah.[768.42][768.42](LAUGHING).
Thank you.
All right. I must say, it's been a wonderful 26 years of serving this community and working on really great projects that I think will kind of live on into eternity. So, yeah, thoroughly enjoyed it. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Well, I've...[792.25][792.25](APPLAUSE). So, thank you very much. And a proclamation recognizing September 7th through 13th, 2025, as Suicide Prevention Week, and Councilmember, I know, right here, Stacey Atkins Salazar is going to read it. Thank you.
So, recognizing September 7th through 13th, 2025, as Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas suicide is a national and statewide public health problem, and suicide prevention is a national and statewide responsibility. And whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, the second leading cause of death among ages 10 to 34, the fourth leading cause of death amongst individuals between the ages of 35 and 44. And whereas it is estimated that in 2023, there were 1.5 million suicide attempts. Over 49,000 people died by suicide in the United States, with 4,200 of those deaths occurring in California. And whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition was not recognized or treated. And whereas organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide or who struggle, an urge that we, number one, recognize suicide as a preventable national and state public health problem, and declare suicide prevention to be a priority. Two, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities. Three, address the disparity in access to mental health care for underserved and underrepresented groups, and advocate for ending those disparities. Four, fund new suicide research to support culturally informed and evidence-based mental health care and services. Five, encourage initiatives in Arcata based on the goals contained in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention and the 2025 California Suicide Prevention Plan. Six, promote awareness that there is no single cause for suicide, and that suicide most often occurs when stressors exceed the coping abilities of someone struggling with a mental health condition. Seven, develop and implement strategies to improve and increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services programs. And eight, continue advocacy to ensure we can reimagine a comprehensive suicide, mental health, and substance use crisis response system that builds on the landmark 988 number for suicide and crisis lifeline, or 988 number. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes September 7th through the 13th, 2025, as Suicide Prevention Week, and recognizes September 10th as World Suicide Prevention Day dated today, August 20th, signed by our mayor Alexandra Stillman. And I believe we should have Heather Freitas here, who is the Board Secretary of the San Francisco Bay Area Chapter of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention.[1004.63][1004.63](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for accepting this proclamation and adopting it. I wanted to share with everyone that on Sunday, September 7th, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention is hosting a community walk called the Arcata Out of the Darkness Community Walk, and it's for our entire community. It's a free and public event. More information can be found online at afsp.org/arcata. And that's really all I got to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, thank you.[1047.31][1047.31](APPLAUSE). This evening, we do not have any reports from commissions or committees. And our next item on the agenda is staff reports. Our reports shall be specifically limited to city business and shall not request or lead to action by the council at this time. Will there be any staff reports this evening?
No, just real briefly, I just wanted to report to the council that we had a very productive homeless services working group. We had representatives from the county, Arcata House, our community development department. And then we also invited some new members from our space in Playhouse Arts. We had attendance from John Shelter. And we brought in that group, and I think we had a really productive meeting, and just talking about what solutions are and what they can look like, and kind of what identified a pathway of, you know, how can we start to solve some of these problems in a very collaborative way? And so I think there's a lot of consensus on approach. And so I was really pleased to have a productive meeting at that homeless services working group meeting. And then I also just wanted to remind the council that there is a sanctuary day this weekend at the farmer's market. And then from Centro Del Pueblo, we'll be hosting an event at the Sanctuary Garden between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM for a community celebration of uplifting migrant voices through art, music, theater, dances, and unity. And so I know that I'll be attending that, as well as some of the council members plan on attending and saying a few words. So, really happy to have that invitation from Centro Del Pueblo, and to be able to attend and participate in that event. That's all I have.
And I think you can also roll or ride your bike from Eureka over here.
Yeah, I think there's some other, I think there's, I think there's a lot of other things happening, and I think there's another group, Justice on Wheels, Solidarity Ride from Eureka, but that's not the one I was mentioning, but I think there's a number of people in different events happening around that.
Something for everyone. So, thank you. So, well, next is oral communications. And the city council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are limited to each, each to 15, two minutes each. The full time is 15 minutes for all speakers within that period. If you prefer to wait until the end of the meeting, you will also be allowed to have two minutes of your time for public comment, and this will be under item 12. And speakers are granted then additional two minutes. But only once can you speak, either in the beginning of the meeting or the end of the meeting. Please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda, and the council may respond to statements. There will also be a time to provide public comments specific to each item when the item is being reviewed by the council. And do you have anything you would like to say about decorum?
Well, no, but if you'd like me to just kind of, we've had a couple of very challenging meetings where we haven't had decorum observed at the council meeting. And so, you know, in the event that we start to see that again tonight, I just wanted to put a reminder out there of the reasons why we need to maintain decorum, and then some of the basic rules. And it is because the council values the First Amendment and the right of our community members to express their views. Public participation is the foundation of our decision-making process, and we encourage open dialogue during our meetings. And under the Brown Act, the council members are generally prohibited from responding or acting to items that are not on the published agenda. Meetings are structured to carry out the work of the governing of the city of Arcata and to encourage public comment from the community to maintain order, ensure that the city council accomplishes its business efficiently. The city must address disruptive behavior that hinders conducting of its business or interferes with the right of other community members to participate. And just a reminder, some of the disruptive behavior that we will, we will seek to stop and address tonight would be speaking beyond the allotted time limit, providing comment on items that are outside of the jurisdiction of the council, addressing comments to people other than the city council, threats, engaging in personal attacks, insults, or using slanderous language, engaging in disorderly, loud, threatening, or abusive language, whistling, stamping feet, cheering, jeering, excessive clapping or snapping that disrupts, disturbs, or impedes orderly conduct of the meeting, displaying signs which block others' view, or outside the designated sign area, which is designated in blue at the back of the room. And per Arcata Municipal Code, the mayor may, after issuing a warning, may ask, may, issuing a warning may remove or cause a removal of anybody who's disrupting the meeting. So I really hope that doesn't happen tonight. It's really important that the council continues its business, and so we're going to be making a special effort to make sure that everybody's here has a chance to talk without intimidation or some of those disruptive behaviors.
Mayor, can I make a quick point of order about the green cards, one through four?
Yeah, I'm going to go there. So, the first people, first four people that have green cards are our first speakers, and then the first four people that have yellow cards are our second speakers. So if you have number one, green card, please come forward. Please come forward. Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Scott Davies, and I've been a resident of Arcata for 36 years, and I'm here this evening to respectfully share and express my outrage over the course of the last two city council meetings. Many of us are proud to call Arcata home, in part because of our progressive values of compassion and tolerance. However, the destruction of private property, including more than 4,000 hypodermic needles and hundreds of thousands of pounds of garbage, is way, way beyond any rational limit of tolerance or compassion. This view is shared by the overwhelming majority of Arcata voters, and the voters need you to do better on this issue. We need you to act to stop this destruction and the health and safety violation it has become. From the outside, it looks and feels as though we've, we've lost the plot on this part of the discussion. I'm even more outraged, though, that mob rule and the shouting, rude bully politics have been allowed to overwhelm and stifle our democratic deliberations. Please show the courage and hold firmly to the rudder of public process and not allow the bullying of our democracy and our public servants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do want to remind, we only take 15 minutes. So our second speaker, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
I will be quick. My name is Walt Geist. I'm a resident of the city of Arcata, and I live here very much on purpose. I think we have one of the best communities I've ever been a part of. Not that there's a long list of those, but I am, I consider myself honored to live here. I think you represent us very well. Your job is not an easy one, and you've certainly been the subject of a lot of vitriol. I want to commend you for your fortitude and your strength of conviction, conviction in that really your obligation is to represent everyone, to represent all of the people. And I think we have tried, at least as a community, and I believe yourselves as individuals and acting as a group, have done what you can to represent all of us. And a big part of representing all of us is not singling out one group or another for preferential treatment. There are always two sides to the argument. There are always people's perceptions of what is right and what is wrong, but at the end of the day, everyone deserves, you know, an opportunity to be heard and understood and respected. And by choosing sides as a community, you relegate the people you have not chosen to a second class, and I think that's wrong. So, I appreciate your standing up and remaining as neutral as possible. I also want to thank you for doing things like suicide prevention acknowledgement. That is a serious issue in our community. That's all, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Speaker number three, please.
Thank you, and thank you for taking our comments. I am Sean, and I'm here to speak in favor of Arcata Sister City with Gaza City. I, and this is not in opposition certainly to your mission, in fact, it's to help fulfill your mission, to be part of the solution. What's happening in Gaza is horrible, but we can actually be on the right side of history. We, we can create a sister city that people love and cherish, just like they love and cherish the sister city with Kamaua, Nicaragua, that, that we're paired with. So, we have a event, a benefit show, Water for Gaza. We're raising money for water distribution in Gaza City this Saturday at the Presbyterian Church, starting at 7:00 PM. I hope you can join us there and check out what we're up to. Also, we've raised 1,500 signatures for our petition to encourage you guys to consider passing a resolution for a sister city with Gaza City. And why not? Put it on the agenda. Gaza City wants to be a sister city with Arcata. They said it would be a real milestone for them. And we, we have this first draft. I will read some of the key parts of, whereas the sister city of Arcata has maintained a longstanding and fruitful sister city relationship with Kamaua, Nicaragua through the Arcata-Kamaua Sister City Project since 1986. And whereas a shared interest in such a relationship exists between the people of Arcata and the people of Gaza City, offering opportunities for mutual learning, collaboration, and enrichment. Therefore, be it resolved. Arcata, California formally adopts the sister city with affirming a commitment to peace, understanding, humanitarian principles as city of our council, and it shall designate and maintain one council member as the official liaison to the sister city nonprofit community relationship, and give the same rights as to the Gaza Sister City as to the Kamaua Sister City. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And speaker number four with the green card, please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne, and I just want to thank each of you for doing the wonderful job. It requires a lot of hard work, and I know you're not compensated enough for what you do. I know these have been really stressful meetings. There's a lot of anger, a lot of pain being expressed. I just hope that the people expressing that anger, which is understandable, can learn to communicate more civilly with compassion and listen, and instead of casting blame, kind of think about what President Kennedy said. Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. And I think all of us as citizens of Arcata need to step up and contribute and help solve the problem. It doesn't just fall in your lap. So, thank you for hanging in and doing all the good work you've done.
Thank you very much. So it'll be our first yellow card. Please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager, staff. My name is John Shelter from the People of New Directions, controversial at last. I want to thank you guys for allowing us to work in Arcata. We've been able to take on Carlson Park. We've been able to take on the Marsh, and then it fanned out to other businesses. We're over 225,000 pounds of trash that we've removed from various areas around Arcata. And we're not done yet. We have a lot more to go. The, the people that are... The people that are out there are scared and fearful, and we've been trying to work with them. Although there's been quite a lot of hurdles in the last couple of weeks, but we're going to get through this together. Your staff, city manager, law enforcement are very supportive and are actually listening to what I have to say, and it's making things really well. We're going to do a real good job out there, and then we're going to move to other parts. I thank you guys very much. You're not the only one that's on this. We've signed contracts with the City of Fortuna, Humboldt County Roads, Humboldt County Parks, the Railroad, and then there's many other shopping centers that we do also. This puts the homeless to work. It gives them something busy to do, and I don't think anybody could say we're not doing a great job, me and my homeless people. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much this evening. Our next speaker with the yellow card, number two. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, I would like to ask that Palestine be put on the agenda. Today to date, killed and injured in Palestine, sixty-one thousand eight hundred and five Palestinians killed, half of them women and children, a hundred and fifty-six thousand injured, seventeen thousand children killed, thirty-three thousand injured, approximately ninety-three thousand indirect deaths from traumatic injury. And targeting seriously by the IDF, first children to end the siege, press, over two hundred and seventy to date, to stop the truth, doctors, medical workers, to ensure the deaths, aid workers to stop the aid, scholars to stop the thinkers. Again, please Palestine on the agenda. This council is violating their own rules of investments, which forbid support of companies committing human rights violations and war crimes, investing in your own Toyota, which supplies trucks to the IDF, John Deere, which provides ATVs and UTVs to California Border Patrol and ICE, Honda, which also provides ATVs to California Border Patrol. If you think these political issues are not yours to discuss, to deal with, you're wrong. But whatever you think, this work takes courage and integrity. If you're not living and working close to the edge, you're taking up too much space, and you should lose our attention.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please, number three.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you said about need to support Suicide Week. My name is Cynthia Potan. I'm a new resident here in Arcata. Very happy to be here, and I'm here to urge you to designate Arcata as sister city to Gaza City. All of Gaza right now is in dire need of support. Due to Netanyahu's roadblock, famine is a reality, with deaths from starvation mounting by the day. I wonder if you've seen any of the photographs of the starving children, bones and skin. And you probably are aware that starving men, women, and children standing in line at the humanitarian aid sites are being shot at and killed. I wonder if you're aware that Netanyahu's forces have destroyed the water delivery system in Gaza, so people are also dying of thirst. They've also destroyed the sewage infrastructure, and raw sewage has become another dire survival Ashana Leon has built a strong foundation for a sister city project. He's established working contacts in Gaza City, contacts that are enabling him to even now deliver water to the people of Gaza, and enabling him to contribute money to a program that is supporting the mental health of children there. Very important. He's been tireless in raising the money to send to Gaza.
Thank you very much. Your time is up, and appreciate your comments. Thank you. And speaker number four, please, with the yellow card. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Akib. I have some things I'd like to share. I think it's time for Arcata to be a sister city of Gaza. Thank you. We've been served.
Thank you very much, and that'll end, basically. We're two minutes in. Well, you, do you have a card with you, Shoshana? Well, we have two minutes left, so come and take advantage of it.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank the city council for helping support the Ferry Festival this summer and the palette of events that were supported for the community this summer, or this year. I think it's fantastic that the city has been so supportive of community events, and we had a fantastic event with people, I think about six thousand-ish again this year. It was our fifth festival. There was quite a big focus on all ages, opportunities for expression, for fun, for just a lot of live music, Maypole dance, a lot of local and visiting artisans that shared things there. It was a program of the Playhouse this year. We partnered with the Playhouse to have it happen this time, which was great. Particularly, it was there to fundraise for Our Space, their program, working with houseless folks in our community. And the festival has a tradition of lounges, where there's little interactive things throughout the event, and one of those lounges was for Our Space, which was really special this time, because the folks that are often pushed off the side of the events on the plaza were brought into it and had a space to be at the event, which was pretty lovely. Invited lots of people in to be in the space they created, which was cool. What else? I just want to say thank you, thank you. I think our festivals are such a powerful economic driver for our community, and that they can really be such a way to increase happiness and joy in the community, as well as real economic impact. And it's great to be back in Arcata. My on-time, I'm working at the library in Arcata now, which is great, and then the off-time, working with Rotary Club of Arcata Sunrise, Girl Scouts, Kinetics, and cheering on first five Humboldt projects in the community, and just thanks for supporting the great special things that make our community really unique. And I have a thank you card and some stickers.
Thank you very much. Are you going to twirl around for us? Yay, Shoshana! Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And that ends our oral communications. And so we'll go on to our consent calendar. Thank you. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted on one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is to be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, the council members can request that an item be removed for a separate discussion. Members of the public may comment on any item that's remaining on the consent calendar in the comment period before the vote. A, approval to weigh, I mean, you know, it's, we are having warm weather in Arcata, and it's not, I led a walk today with the Cal Poly students, and so many of them were from Fresno, and they're going, it's actually cool here, but for us, it was quite warm, so I'm thirsty. So approval to read, reading of title and consent to read by title only for any ordinance on this agenda. B, approve the minutes of the city council's special meeting of July twentieth, twenty-five. Approve the minutes of the city council's special meeting study session, July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Approve the minutes of the city council's special meeting of August sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Approve the minutes of the city council meeting of August sixth, twenty-twenty-five. And bi-weekly reports on dispersments. Approve the community, Arcata Community Forest Bike Skills Park Project. Approve the purchase of three twenty-twenty-six hybrid Ford police interceptor and award contract to Harper Motors in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-four cents, including tax, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And the last item is adopt amendment to the initial study and mitigation negative declaration for the City of Arcata's Annie and Mary Trail Connectivity Project. Adopt resolution number two-five-six dash oh-four, accepting a public access easement and approve necessary and associated related actions. So is there any item on the consent calendar a council member would like to remove? Saying none. Is there any item on the consent calendar that a member of the public?
We don't do that.
Pardon me?
We don't do that, just public comment.
Any public comment on the consent calendar?
Hi, yes, my name is Joanne McGary, and I attended the meeting of August sixth, two weeks ago, and the consent calendar at the time was not really read out like you do regularly, and of course, there was a lot of disruption and noise, but there wasn't an opportunity at the time for people like me to speak on public comment on that. So I don't know if it was reflected in those minutes. I looked at them briefly, but it looks like we're, some of the issues that we did not really have a chance to speak on at the last meeting are on this consent calendar. But I also just wanted to say that, again, I'm really concerned that consent calendar has items on it that are huge costs, and I just think we need to set a limit for the consent calendar of what we can approve in terms of spending money at a certain limit. So like these hybrid Ford police interceptors at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand-plus dollars. You know, if you go and you read, you understand it, but not everybody listening or in this room right now has had the opportunity to understand that, and it's a lot of money. And so people are really interested in where our money is spent. And I'm not arguing that we don't need new vehicles and all this, but I'm just saying huge amount of monies on a consent calendar concern me. I'm just saying that out loud once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the consent calendar?
Being none, may we have a motion, please, to adopt?
There are no hands on Zoom.
I'm sorry?
I was just responding that there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Or is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
Could we have a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we moved, any discussion? Then the motion, let's, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Those nay, being none, the motion carried.
Mayor Stillman, I didn't hear your vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go on to old business. There's none. We'll go on to new business, adopt a section fifteen oh-six B three, environmental review exemption pursuant to the Arcata, excuse me, to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and adopt the City of Arcata Council's action amending the Trillium Creek Plan Development Permit, which is something I remember from years ago, and I'm glad to see that it's finally coming forward again. So a staff report, please.
Good evening, council members and community members as well. My name is Joe Matier, senior planner for the City of Arcata Community Development Department. Before you this evening is a public hearing item to, staff is recommending that you do adopt the sequoia exemption, the California Environmental Quality Act exemption, finding that the action will have no impact on the environment by removing the affordable housing requirements from this plan development permit. Staff reviewed the mitigated negative declaration and the findings, and none of them were associated with any of the affordable housing requirements. And then adopt the action that you find in the staff report. There are amendments to the conditions of approval, primarily to remove D two, the one that requires two of the lots be restricted to low and moderate income persons. And the project is like a long time ago. They've been working very hard diligently. It's a local family that has been working, doing a lot of sweat equity there. It's a subdivision, it's about twenty-four acres. Most of it, seventeen acres, are set aside as a remainder with conservation easements to protect the Trillium Creek and wetlands that are on site. The other area is going to create eight lots. Two of them are very small, and staff recommends that the council take this action. The staff report identifies that previous city councils have removed the regulatory agreement requirements on two other subdivisions. The city council has adopted inclusionary zoning that requires rent restrictions for projects over sixty housing units. As a reminder, this one has eight housing units, so it's quite a change in that. And then just the fact that two of the lots are very small, and one of the highest costs of providing housing would be land costs, so inherently, there will be a lower cost for those properties there. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions before we open public hearing? I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. Anyone that would like to speak on it, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I read the minutes usually prior to the meeting, and I did a few days ago, and looked up this Trillium Creek matter after looking at the staff report, and know that the history of what was desired to happen many, many years ago is now just actually coming to be. And the history of these types of projects being extended and elongated sometimes is a harmful thing to those who have the vision and the image and the desire to create something many, many years ago. So, you know, I'm all in favor of additional creative style housing in this community, and it seems to me what is being asked for here is appropriate, especially because of the huge, long delay that has occurred. So I recommend if people are interested in this project, they look up some history in the past news about what happened with previous planning commissions and city councils about Trillium Creek. So, you know, go forward, but we, as the City of Arcata, it's been said to me many a times, they're really hard to work with sometimes to get a dream to come to fruition, and it takes so long, it becomes a nightmare, and then sometimes it doesn't even happen. So this is one example. Let's go through with it, and let's see what creative housing can be up there in Trillium Creek.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Any comments or ideas? Do you want to have a motion, please? Oh, is there anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt section fifteen oh-six-one B three, environmental review exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and then adopt the city council of the City of Arcata Action Attachment A, amending the Trillium Creek Plan Development Permit.
A second, please.
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is introduce ordinance number one-five-eight-two, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to dogs at large, service animals, dog licenses, dog empowerment, and Title V, sanitation and health, and Title X, public property. So may we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Danielle Allred. I'm the Contracts and Special Projects Manager for the City of Arcata, and I'm here to present on ordinance number fifteen eighty-two. Following a claim for money or damages brought against the city, city staff became aware that some updates were needed to portions of our municipal code pertaining to dog leash requirements and dogs in the downtown areas, as well as dog licensing fees, in order to formally recognize and accommodate service animals and their handlers. Though the code is written, currently includes exceptions for guide dogs, the updated language incorporates the more broader definition of service animal, as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, and in recognition of the wide range of assistance tasks that service animals can provide. So the proposed updates include establishing exceptions for service dogs to be permitted in areas where dogs, other dogs typically are not allowed. It also establishes leash law exemptions for service animals and their handlers when a leash or similar device would interfere with the dog's ability to- when a leash or similar device would interfere with the dog's ability to perform its trained tasks or when a person's disability prevents them from using such devices. It also establishes leash law exemptions for dogs assisting peace officers, and it formalizes leash law exemptions for designated dog park areas. Although the city currently has a process for waiving fees for licensing assistance dogs, the proposed ordinance would formalize this license fee waiver and process. And here, staff would like to recommend a minor amendment to the ordinance, which currently uses the term assistance dog within the description of this licensing process, which is reflective of the current application that's in use. However, we suggest replacing instances of assistance dog with service dog to maintain consistent terminology throughout the ordinance. Finally, the ordinance proposes some minor updates to code sections pertaining to hold times for impounded dogs to bring the code in conformance with the California Food and Agriculture Code, as well as practices of the Humboldt County Animal Shelter, whom the city contracts with for animal shelter services. So that is a summary of the proposed ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the council have any questions? Well, then I would like to open public hearing, please. Those who are interested, please come forward and speak.
I'm interested in everything. My name's Joanne McGary, and in my prior life, I worked at the San Francisco SPCA where we had a hearing dog for the deaf program. And we rescued sheltered dogs and trained them to be alert dogs for hearing impaired people. And the issue of service dogs was very important, and vest wearing and certifications and all this was a very important part. This was many, many years ago, but then time has gone by and there was a trend coming up called emotional support animals. And that became problematic for trained service dogs when untrained emotional support animals were in conflicting areas. So I appreciate the designation of specific naming of service animals. However, they are serving the person is an important distinction. And I was saying this aloud, it's different than an emotional support animal. So it's really important that service animals are allowed to do the work that they're trained to do. And emotional support animals are a beautiful thing, but it's a different thing than a service animal. So I applaud you for making this specific language in this ordinance, you know, clear about it. Assistance is something, but service is primary. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, making that a correction throughout the item. Is there a motion available? Would you like to make one? DC?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
We have had no one on Zoom so far. Thank you.
Yes, I move to approve the amendment replacing all instances of assistance dog with service dog in Article 2, Chapter 2, Title V of the Arcata Municipal Code, and to introduce ordinance number 1582, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to dogs at large, service animals, dog licenses, and dog impoundment. Title V sanitation and health, and Title X public property as amended.
I will second.
And thank you, there's some motion and a second. Is there comments, anyone in council? No? Okay, all those in favor signify saying aye.
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 Those most, not?
Those opposed?
There are none. So the motion carries. Now we're going to move on to oral communications. And the city council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters, not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to two minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on the items not listed on the agenda, and the council will respond to statements. So oral communication, would anyone like to address the council at this time, please? Joanne?
Why don't you just put a plaque here with my name on it, okay? My name's Joanne McGary, and I like to talk in threes. I'll have to grab something quick. I'm going to start with reminding you that we did pass a ceasefire resolution back in March of 2024. It did not include, however, what many people requested it include, which was a arms ban of sending U.S. monies and weapons to the state of Israel. And now, these many, many months later, these many, many deaths later, this much horror show later, there is an effort in Congress to pass H.R., I don't know the exact number, and I'll send you the information, but it's Representative Ramirez in Illinois called Block the Bombs Act. And also Ilhan Omar, the Minnesota representative, has a petition online to also prohibit U.S. tax dollars being spent to go to the Israeli military to do the harm that they are doing in Gaza. So I think we, as a community, the flavor of what is happening and what we know and how we feel, how we feel about things and the compassion our community has for people all over the world, I would like for us to write a letter of support and maybe sign on to the petition that we no longer want our tax dollars and monies to go to weapons of mass destruction to the state of Israel. And it's unfortunate we didn't do it within this resolution of a year and a half ago, but we can do it now. And I think it's time, and I think the citizens of this community want that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Thank you. Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were coming forward, sorry. Thank you. So. You already spoke once. So sorry about that. So is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we have hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you.
Five currently. Abraham, please go ahead.
Hi, Abraham from Arcata. The conflict in Israel didn't begin on October 7th, or even with Israel's Declaration of Independence from Great Britain in 1948. So many antisemitic atrocities took place before the establishment of Israel that I can only list seven times Palestinian Arabs massacred Jews. Parents be advised. In 1834, Muslim terrorists raped and killed over 500 Jews who were living in the West Bank. Hundreds more West Bank Jews were raped and murdered in 1838. On Passover in 1920, an Islamist mob ended their Friday prayers with a call to slaughter the Jews and began a rampage that left 200 Jews injured, six stabbed to death, and countless women raped. In 1921, 50 Jews were murdered in their homes in Tel Aviv. Many more were beaten. Palestinian police officers participated in the attack. In 1929, families were massacred in their homes. Residents of the Jewish quarter had their throats slit, and Jews in the West Bank were stoned to death. Women were raped, rabbis were emasculated, and had their eyes gouged out, and children were beaten to death, decapitated, and tortured. Observers stated that the larger Muslim population celebrated. Countless Jews lost their lives in what can only be described as a three-year proto-intifada that began in 1936. And in 1942, the Grand Mufti of Jerusalem smuggled Nazi soldiers into the Middle East as part of a failed attempt to kill every last Jew living in Palestine. This is the same Grand Mufti, by the way, who continued to help lead the so-called Palestinian liberation movement until his death in the 1970s. So don't let anyone tell you that the violence in Palestine was started by Zionists. Radical Muslims in Palestine have been trying to exterminate the Jews for more than 150 years. All Zionism did was give the Jews a way to fight back. And by the way, a sister city with Gaza is against the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Amy, please go ahead. Amy, please.
Thank you. It takes a minute to unmute, so please set the timer when we unmute if you can. The stress and disruption of these past few meetings is nothing compared to the horrors of genocide that the indigenous people of Palestine experience every day. Put divestment on the agenda. Your discomfort in these past few meetings pales in comparison to the stress under which unhoused residents of Arcata struggle for survival every day. Stress that contributes to suicide and overdose death that you claim to care about. Stress that you have the power, indeed the duty, to alleviate by providing housing. And in the meantime, dumpsters, bathrooms, Sharps disposal containers, and wraparound care, including mental health and social services. In three months, you'll be ready to declare it the season of wonder in light here in Arcata. And meanwhile, the unhoused Arcatans that you represent will be forced out of their homes on the back 40 with no place else to go. You can fix this. Do the right thing. Stop the sweeps.
Next speaker on Zoom, please.
Gillian, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Gillian. I'm a student at Cal Poly Humboldt, as well as I've been a community member for two years. I'm here to demand that the council further consider adopting Gaza City as a sister city to Gaza. We've seen that Arcata is fully capable of fostering these sorts of international relationships as they've already had a sister city relationship with Nicaragua since 1986. This project reflects the values of Arcata residents and the city's culture as a whole, which promotes peace, community, creative solutions. And the city has housed residents that have left behind like a significant legacy of activism in our city. Gaza City specifically is under threat of deadly assault by Israel as they've very publicly announced their plans to escalate an offensive ground invasion of Gaza City, the perimeters of which have already been occupied by Israeli troops. These are moments of urgency, and adopting Gaza City as a sister city would be a symbolic action that could empower other cities and organizations across California and maybe across the country to announce their solidarity with the people trapped in the besieged strip. These are critical moments, and these are opportunities for the council to make meaningful action towards progress that the community supports. I'd also like to demand that the council investigate if CalPERS investments violate Arcata's socially responsible investing clause, which you have pledged to uphold as city council members and community representatives. This is also an issue of international law and human rights violations, of which you are all currently complicit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Ella, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Ella, I live in Arcata. I'm 92 years old, so you know me. I've lived during World War II and the Holocaust and history since. The last council meeting is a direct result of the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition spreading their hateful rhetoric against the Jews. And they didn't have to do it. They could just say that Gazan people are suffering because of the war, let's see if we can help. But the Redwood Peace and Justice have a different agenda. They wanted you to hate Jews. And now they are showing their true colors. Now the Redwood Peace and Justice website has a Palestinian flag as their symbol. This is America, not Palestine. I want to know if the members of the Redwood Peace and Justice are really citizens of this country. I can trace my ancestors on my father's side to one who fought with George Washington, our first president. Americans fought for the freedoms we enjoy, and one of which is freedom of religion, which, if you don't understand, is a freedom to worship or not, any way you want, and not stop anyone else from worshiping or not, any way they want. I don't know how many of the Redwood Peace and Justice people are actually citizens of this country, if they don't understand that. But the few who were at the last council meeting were not even civilized. This is the United States of America. We are not a third world country. We are, we act civilized here. Of course, I oppose sister cityhood with Gazan and my beautiful Arcata, as do most of Arcata's citizens. Screaming and hurling obscenities as city council members was such a disgrace. I don't wonder why the perpetrators wore masks. They obviously didn't.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker on Zoom, please.
A Samsung caller, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I live in Arcata. I'm here once again to voice my strong opposition to the Gaza sister city proposal. First, I'd like to comment on the rabid hate mob behavior directed at speakers and city council members at the last meeting. When I was first made aware that a call to action was put out online and on posters around Arcata comes spew hate, misinformation, and propaganda, I decided not to attend because I have, actually, I don't have a lot of time for a bunch of rabid viral hate zombies and people who are addicted to hating Jews and supporting a terrorist group. They behaved exactly the way that I thought they would. All rage, hate, screaming out of control, disrespecting the council chambers and rules of behavior, and verbally assaulting speakers, council members, and others. Our city council does not deserve to be disrespected, heckled, and threatened by rabid hate mob. I don't think they should have allowed such behavior here, and I'm glad to know that you're not going to allow it in the future. This uncivilized behavior is exactly why I do not support the city's sister proposal. I do not want any sister city with hateful people involved in it. The behavior at the last meeting should be all the council needs to experience to say no to this proposal. There are a thousand reasons for a city thousands of miles away in an active war zone not to be a good candidate for a sister city. It is also federally illegal to give aid or comfort to a designated terrorist group. If people supporting the sister city want to fund terrorism and pay for slay through NGOs, let them do it.
Okay, that, our next speaker on Zoom, please.
I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Sidely, please go ahead.
Yeah, hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'm just calling in to voice my support for the Gaza sister city. I think it's a great idea. I think people got it twisted that last council meeting, we actually, the people that were protesting for the sister city were quite civil, quite chill. I also want to voice my support against the sweeps that are going on. I think it's cruel, I think it's mean, and I think the violence we do here to the people who live in Arcata mirrors the violence that's being done to the people of Palestine. Free Palestine, please resign. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. The next speaker on Zoom, please.
Phone call-in listener, area code 916, please go ahead. You should hear a prompt saying we've unmuted you.
You're unable to hear the person?
No, we're not able to.
Is there anyone else on Zoom?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, well, that'll conclude our oral communications then for this evening, and we'll move on to council reports. We've already gone through oral communications, and so we're completing that now with the last Zoom call. And we already had people in the audience speak, so, thank you. So we'll go on to council reports. You're not allowed to speak right now, and thank you for, thank you for not doing this. So please be quiet and go to the back of the room, or you can wait till our next council meeting to speak, or you can write us a letter, or you can send us an email. So thank you. Thank you. So we'll go on to council reports. Why don't we start with you, Sarah?
Just a few things. I guess Mary already spoke to the sanctuary day that's going to be happening this Saturday. Again, beginning with a ride at 8:00 a.m. from Target to Arcata. They're going to stop at the Marsh and have some events, and then be here on the Plaza by 11:00 a.m. for some speakers, and then finish out the day at the Sanctuary Garden with dancing, entertainment, other stuff going on. And then also just equitaria- And then also just, Equity Arcata's had a few successful events recently I wanted to touch on. They held another one of their vendor workshop series, working with Cal Poly and local folks that want to either vend within the city of Arcata at different events or become a vendor on Cal Poly Humboldt campus and bringing together the SPD C and the Chamber of Commerce and local business owners to put that on has been really successful and we're coming up with even more ideas how to get folks involved for future events. So that was great. And then also just that our Equity Arcata manager, Mo, had a presence both at Moven Day and also at the Obon Festival this last weekend. I know some of our, my colleagues definitely attended Moven Day, I was not there, but Obon was a wonderful day of dancing and music and right down there in the Creamery District. And so Equity Arcata's been doing a lot, getting a lot up and running with students being back and it's been good to see. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. We'll move on to Stacy.
Okay, thank you. I did attend the homeless services working group today and Merritt did give a rundown of that, so it was a great discussion and we are really trying to work with folks who are, who have been unhoused for a very long time and help connect them to services. So thank you for sharing that update. And yes, the Obon Festival was wonderful, it's great to have that in the Creamery District. I also attended, I'm doing a leadership certificate program through the Elected Officials to Protect America. It's a really wonderful, brilliant group of people and we met in DC recently and that was the kickoff and it was, it was a great experience. I'm happy to be continuing forward with them. And I will be going to HCOG tomorrow, Humboldt County Associations of Government for that monthly meeting. And then if you'll all indulge me for a minute, I do have an idea for a possible agenda item that I would like to run by you all. And so we've, we've heard over the past year, a lot of different, very opposing suggestions on things that we could do to help the, the people in Palestine, the people, the women, the children, the people that are starving. And it is widely known to be a humanitarian atrocity. The, there's been a lot of ideas given to us, none of which I've found to be, in my opinion, the right one forward. So I did some, I've been doing some reflecting on that and thinking, well, you know, it hurts my heart too, just as it does to everybody I talk to. So what could be something that would be more uniting rather than dividing in our community? I've spoken to a lot of people in the community. I was also able to, at that conference, speak to a lot of elected officials, mostly state-elected folks, some city council members and mayors, who, and everyone I talked to was having the same conversations, the same difficulties in their communities and actually many of them were having, believe it or not, much of a harder time than we are in our community, bigger communities, more division. And so as I talked and tried to find, I was kind of looking for somebody to give me an idea for a way forward, which didn't actually happen directly, but what I saw was a hesitation of electeds to move in a direction because they felt like there wasn't a direction that they could move that wasn't going to, to put them on a very extreme, some, to align them sometimes with extreme points of view or division within their communities. And so as I, and that's what I found in our community too. There, when I, when I speak to people about this, I haven't, I haven't had a conversation with anyone yet that has said it's okay what's happening. People don't know what to do, a lot of people do think our government should intervene and should help the people. But when you start to, to get the politics into it, when you start to get more complicated, away from helping people, that's where the conversation breaks down. So through all of that and through that weekend, I realized, why don't we just keep it simple? Like if we can agree, and it didn't happen tonight, but in the past, I've really listened to callers and we've had people from very different points of view and they have, most of them have said, there is a humanitarian crisis from no matter what side. That keeps being acknowledged and then it goes into different directions. So if I'm hearing that from people in public comment in the community and if people are coming to us with ideas that really behind that for a lot of folks is to help the people that are starving and that need aid. If that is where we can all find common ground, which I don't know why we couldn't on that. So I did some, some research on my own, I didn't want to involve staff time. I did some research on resolutions, most of my information came from the United Nations Security Council. Other countries are trying to, to get to work to help folks with aid. Our country seems to be stagnant on that and I think it's, a lot of it has to do with this division. So what I'm hoping is I have a drafted resolution that's a resolution urging immediate, safe and unhindered delivery of humanitarian aid to civilians in Gaza and across Palestine. It's, it's a very powerful, short resolution and if the council is willing, I did also, I talked to council member Matthews because I know, I've heard her express that she's had, you know, and I'll let her speak for herself, but I, I think that we felt aligned on this, not really comfortable with the ideas that were bringing, being brought forth, but also having a heart for people. So I did ask her if she wanted to bring this forward with me as a, as a possible agenda item and she said yes. So I would like to propose that we not only do, the reason behind this is not just for a resolution, but it's so that we can network with, we all know people, we have relationships with state and federal representatives from our area and from other areas. If we could show them what, if we do happen, if our, you know, if this is what the people of Arcata want and we do end up passing this, then we could really push this forward to those people who I believe are looking for direction and are feeling very pulled and a bit frozen in what to do because of the polarization. So I think it would be meaningful, I think we could start something that does push for helping people if, if you would all like it to be on the agenda. Thanks for the long indulgence.
Thank you. So we'll go to you, Kimberly.
Great. First, I just want to welcome Cal Poly Humboldt students back. I had the honor to emcee the Floating Lantern Ceremony on August 9th at Clop Lake at the Arcata Marsh and it was wonderful. There were Tyco drummers, Hawaiian Hulu, McKinleyville Community Choir, and of course our raging grannies. So it was beautiful, it was well-attended and I felt like it was a wonderful opportunity for the community to reunite and that happened. So I got some great video, actually people talking about that very thing, that we needed this as a community. So I concur. I also had an opportunity earlier that day to attend Derrick Russell from the Arcata AMPT Skate Memorial at their kid a skate park earlier that day. And it was, what a legacy that he has left. It was full, so many people. More on that later. I also recently attended a Naleo National Association of Latino Elected Officials Conference in Atlanta. Some of the topics included federal policies and the Latino community policy considerations, lessons learned from Los Angeles. We had a special session on expanding home ownership for stronger communities for all. We talked about AI and workforce opportunities and challenges and then of course, work-related events responses. So I'm looking forward to attending another Naleo Conference in September, actually on disaster preparedness. And speaking of disaster preparedness, there is a local upcoming workshop for disaster emergency preparedness training in September 10th for businesses and organizations, but you're going to want to register now or as soon as possible through the Blue Lake Rancheria Office of Emergency Services. I attended the Humboldt Equity Consortium earlier this month, next Wednesday I'll be attending Arcata Equity. And just to piggyback on what our city manager and Sarah, yeah, there's so much going on on Saturday at nine to 10 at the Arcata Marsh, there's going to be a water afrenda and an Aztec dance ceremony. So it's going to be a busy Saturday with Black Humble also celebrating black and brown communities with a block party with back-to-school supplies, free haircuts, free and low-priced clothing, as well as an opportunity to shop and support our black businesses. And that'll be at the Mad River Brewery from nine to seven. And there will be food trucks and the entry to this event is free. And then finally, Kuna has been holding, Comunidad Unidad del Norte de Arcata, or Community United of North Arcata, have been holding free produce and farm stands, helping the most vulnerable in our community, including our Spanish-speaking community members, students and of course our unhoused community. Tomorrow I will be attending a Redwood Region Economic Development Commission ad hoc committee and then next Monday I will be attending our monthly evening Redwood Region Economic Development Commission meeting. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Welcome to Meredith.
So I want to thank Councilwoman Atkinson Sar for approaching me about this resolution. You know, Stacy is way more eloquent than I could ever hope to be, so I really appreciate her, you know, giving voice to, you know, what we've been talking about. You know, I have to write things down and then you read them over and they, they just sound trite, but you know, know that this war and what people have been saying has occupied a huge part of my brain for the last two years. And I hear you and I acknowledge that and I also want to be clear because I have been, you know, personally attacked. I just want to be clear that while I'm Jewish, my identity does not mean I support every action of the Israeli government. I truly believe in human rights for all. Pose it targeting civilians, I, it's been, but that being said, you know, my role here is to make decisions that best serve the interests of Arcata. And I believe for that reason. And people have demanded to know what I think and where I stand, so I'll say it right now. I cannot support forming sister city relationship with Gaza City, which is governed by Hamas, which is a US-designated terrorist organization. Nor can I support pressuring CalPERS to divest in a way that could harm the fiscal health of our city and the stability of our employee retirements. But we can and we should, like Stacy said, stand in solid area with solidarity with victims of war and supporting humanitarian relief and fostering calm dialogue. But our official city actions have to stay focused in our core responsibilities to Arcata. So. That's that.
Thank you. Do you have anything else you'd like to report?
I mean, yeah, there's the I Street Block Party on September 1st, but really, I'm done.
And Kimberly, you wanted to add something more?
I was gonna-
Oh, you were going to do that also? So I was able to go up to the quad, which is usually where the city goes to welcome their Humboldt State students, which now are California Poly Humboldt students. And I also took along a lot of the things from Humboldt Transit Authority because we really want people to have, feel free that they can take the bus wherever they want. And so that was something I did last Saturday. And it's been really busy, and the music scene has been really busy in our county and I hope everyone's enjoying it. And I want to thank all of you for coming tonight and supporting us as the council level and I really appreciate seeing you there and thank you for stepping up and being here tonight. And with that, I would say we're adjourned and thank you again.